Can you guys hear us okay?
Yes.
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 Marta, are you on?
Yeah, I'm here.
Hello, thank you for hosting.
No problem.
When we get to screen sharing, when I go to share a screen, it's saying like not yet disabled. Is that something you'd be able to turn on for my computer in a few minutes?
Okay, I got it. You should be able to share.
Share screen. Terrific. Thank you.
So Chair Lewis, this is Rick.
Hi, Rick.
Hey, it looks like we have a quorum now. So never you are ready. We're almost at that.
Get on. Ah, come on, what's going on now?
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
How's it going?
Good, yourself?
Good. Good to see all of you.
Yeah, you bet. You too.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay, sorry about that. Not sure what happened there. Okay. I don't see Commissioner Schuman. Okay, let's go ahead and start the meeting. Yeah, let's go ahead and start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thanks. Let's go ahead. Francis, Commissioners Torman, Commissioners Burton and Commissioners Howe are here today, and I don't see Commissioner Schuman yet. Ron, I think you might be breaking up a bit. Okay. I keep getting dropped for some reason. Okay, does everybody approve? Do I have any vote for approval of the minutes? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, minutes carried. All right. Are there any comments from the Commissioners? Before we get into the rest of it? And are there any public comments? Friends not on the agenda? Chair, there is someone in the audience that would like to make a public comment. Okay, please go ahead and keep it to two minutes. Thank you. State your name and where you're from.
I got to know my name is Ron Gleason from Unincorporated Weaver County, the Eden area. Just want to make a couple of statements about North Fork Park and its dark sky accreditation. For those of you who have been involved for a number of years, you may remember back in April of 2015, that North Fork Park was awarded the International Dark Sky Park Accreditation by the International Dark Sky Association. It was the 21st designated park in the world. Since then, 10 more Utah State Parks and 10 US National Parks and monuments have also received the accreditation, making Utah the number one destination in North America for astro tourism. There is a small group of four of us, myself, Zach Thomas, Janet and David Muir, that do a number of activities that coordinate with Jennifer Graham of the Weaver County Park and Recreation to continue the accreditation. We take dark sky readings. We just did them on Sunday night. We spent three hours in the park. We host public events such as star viewing parties, wildlife awareness with DWR, and also some skiing and snowshoeing events during the winter. These activities continue public awareness and education. Last year, we were contacted by Crystal White, who works for the state and was doing accreditation at Dead Horse State Park, and she also indicated that she was going to be authoring a book about starry sky adventures in Utah. She came out to North Fork Park and we snowshoed around with her. Today, I want to let everybody know that this book that got published on September 1st, 2021, The Starry Sky Adventure of Utah was released, and North Fork Park is represented as the first park in the book. This is a series of books through called Falcon Guides, which are highly popular with tourism and also with the astro tourism people. We think the inclusion of this book will continue to build awareness for North Fork Park, drive astro tourism activity and dollars to the Ogden Valley area along with Weaver County in general. The four of us wanted to thank the Planning Commission, the groups within Weaver County such as Planning, Engineering, Enforcement, Parks and Rec and the Commissioners for the support they've given over the years. What I have a copy of the book here today with a thank you letter, which I'm going to be handing to Rick Rover, that we're donating to the planning group for their office space. We've also provided a copy of the book to the Parks and Recreation Departments to visit Ogden, and we will be getting one to the county Commissioners in short period of time. We're also here to ask for your continued support in the future to maintain dark sky awareness, characteristics of Ogden.
I have no sound on my.
And support for current.
Zoom meeting here.
So to affect dark skies. So again, thank you for your time. Thank you for your support previously, and I'm going to hand this book with a thank you letter to Rick for planning in their offices. Thanks for your time.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Gleason. Appreciate all you do for our valley. Is there any other public comment not on the agenda? Okay, anything from legal counsel?
Oh, thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you all for coming to the public session. We'll go ahead and adjourn to our work session. All right, so our first item on the work session is Snow Basin Development Discussion. Mr. Hill will be presenting. Welcome, Mr. Hill.
Thank you, Chair. We're grateful to have this opportunity to be with you. And for Zoom and the technology, hopefully we don't trip on it too badly here. We have been practicing a little bit today, but thanks for the opportunity. What I was envisioning here was taking perhaps as long as an hour. We've got about a 30-minute presentation with a deck. I've got three other team members that I want to introduce. And then we wanted to leave up to 30 minutes for question and answer for, you know, as long as you have questions for us. Does that, does that all sound agreeable with your, your overall agenda this evening?
Sounds good, Mr. Hill. We look forward to hearing from you.
Okay, thank you. Well, first, let me introduce myself. My name's Jim Hill. I'm the Vice President of Development for Grand America Hotels and Resorts, which is the parent company of Snow Basin. And I've been working on Snow Basin as a real estate consultant for about two years prior, prior to joining the company in-house. So I'm, my role is essentially the owner's representative for Snow Basin on this real estate development project. And I'd like to take a minute. I've invited three other team members to help present with me today. And part of why I wanted to include them in the dialogue here is we think this is the first of, we hope, you know, many, many meetings. We don't just have like one issue or a small project. This is a very large, long-running project. So I'm anticipating over the months and years ahead that some of the players and companies that you'll meet tonight that will continue in dialogue with you over the longer term. So let me start with our master developer, Bill. Do you want to introduce?
Yeah, thanks, Jim, and thank you for hosting us here, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. My name's Bill Five Ash. I'm with East West Partners, and East West Partners is a real estate developer primarily focused on ski country. We were founded in 1986 in Beaver Creek, Colorado, and we're currently doing business in Beaver Creek, Snowmass, Avon, Colorado, Steamboat, and Deer Valley. And so we're really looking forward to be, our role here, we'll, we'll act as the master developer and kind of orchestrate things at the, on the day-to-day basis. So we expect to be in front of you multiple times coming up, and we really look forward to our, this opportunity.
Thanks, Bill. Let's go to our master planner, Riley.
Great, thanks, Jim. My name's Riley Thiessen, and I'm the President of Ecosign Mount Resort Planners in Whistler, British Columbia. We've completed over 500 resort master plans in 45 countries around the world, including the design of six Olympic and Paralympic Winter Games. We've been working with the Holding family and Snow Basin since 1995, including the 2002 Olympic Winter Games, and most recently since about 2019 on the master plan for Snow Basin. And again, as everyone said, we're very excited to be part of the team and look forward to having further dialogue with you through this process. Thank you.
Thank you, Riley. And then let's go to our civil engineer, Ryan.
Hi, again, my name is Ryan Cathy. I'm the owner and president of Talisman Civil Consultants. I've been working with Jim and Snow Basin on this project since about 2019, focused on master planning of infrastructure, water, sewer, utilities, roadway, and and traffic analysis. So excited to be here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. So here's what we're hoping to accomplish with you tonight. We want to give you sort of the background of what's, what's new and what we're planning at Snow Basin, so that that can help inform, you know, lots of different approvals and things that we'll be seeking again, over the months ahead and months and years ahead. Our main focus tonight will be sort of what we're planning for the next three years. So, so now through 2024. And as we go through it, I guess we look forward to having also maybe a different forum where we can meet you, you know, a little bit more easily than through Zoom. So we wanted to offer an invitation and see if you would have any interest in joining us for a field trip up to Snow Basin. There's a specific date that I know works, seems to work for the staff. That's October 20th. And we'd love to get, I guess, your thoughts, your input, if you might want to come up for, say around lunchtime, we could visit, or end of the workday, and we could present, you know, some of this material in more detail and in person. So I don't know if you want to all huddle or respond now or get back to us or what would be appropriate, but we'd love to just extend that invitation.
Appreciate it. We can chat about that.
Okay. And then the other thing to make you aware of is we have submitted an application on Frontier for a Development Agreement Amendment. I'll be touching on a few of those points. We're hoping that we may be ready for your, your next formal full meeting on October 26th for a public hearing and action. You know, if we're able to progress rapidly enough with the staff process and so forth. So that's, that's our sort of immediate call to action. I'm not going to go into much detail on that tonight. My understanding is you don't have packets yet. It gets a little bit technical, and I think it'll hang better once you sort of understand that the bigger picture and the context of what we're trying to get done between now and 2024. And for my team, we practiced earlier. I'm going to hold off on trying to summarize those changes till the end. So let's go, hopefully here, to a deck. And please bear with me just a moment here while I figure out how to get this to go and share it with you. Share. Okay, back to Zoom. Back to share, back to this. Now, this is, this is the law of something, Murphy's Law or whatever, the law of your Zoom crashes and burns when you need it most. But here we go. So what's happening at Snow Basin and what's new? Let's dive in. I think we covered all these points earlier, our introduction, our players. So Snow Basin has a very rich history, going back to the late 1930s, Alf Angan, ski pioneer, scouting out the terrain for the Forest Service, the resort opening in 1940, so 81 years as a ski resort. Another chapter in that story is 1984, when the Holding family bought the resort. So they've been owners of the resort now for 37 years. And, you know, another key chapter was the Olympics. So hosting the iconic downhill men's and women's downhill races and other events in the 2002 Olympics. A lot of the investments that were made in the resort were in preparation for that. So there's, there's been a lot of improvements made to the resort over this long run. The gondolas go to Needles and Strawberry, the tram up at the top for Allen's Peak, beautiful lodge buildings, Earl's Lodge, Needles Up Mountain, John Paul, the Grizzly Center, et cetera. Very significant snowmaking infrastructure, and the most parking spaces of any ski resort in Utah. Little fun fact, over 3,000 parking spaces and other improvements. And all this has been done, I think, with the long-term view that ultimately this would be more than, than just a day ski resort. We're currently one of the most active day-only ski resorts in the country. But this has always been done again with the notion that the resort would be more, that there'd be lodging, there'd be a lot more to do than we currently have. So that's a lot of what our vision here is about. Another step in this journey was the rezoning of the property, excuse me, in both Weaver County and Morgan County. That was done 10-plus years ago. And it culminated in a development agreement in Weaver County that was signed in 2011, and in Morgan County, a similar agreement in 2013. The resort spans both counties roughly equally in terms of the amount of units that are approved. We have order of magnitude around 2,400 residential units approved in each county for a total of, call it 4,900 residential units. And importantly, in the history for the, for Weaver County is the transfer of 521 residential units that were moved from a site right at the mouth of the Pine View Reservoir up, up onto the mountain. Then one of the key benefits of all the master planning, all the entitlement processes, is the preservation of open space. And so the master plan is done in a way where particularly around the ski amenities, we have a lot of the improvements. They're meant to be dense and active so that we can leave the large majority of the land, 80% of Weber in Weaver County, and it's a slightly higher percentage in Morgan County as open space and the beauty of nature that people are coming for. This is an exhibit from the Development Agreement from 2011 in Weaver County, and it shows the areas that are slated for development. So the colored areas, excuse me, are the four areas within Weaver County that are slated for development. Just to get you oriented, Area A is the existing base area for the ski lodge. So Earl's Lodge would be right here where my cursor is. The main parking lot is right here. Pine View Reservoir would be up here, the Ogden Valley, where many of you are probably sitting is right up here. Mountain Green would be down at the bottom. This is Trapper's Loop Road along here. So areas A and B are ski, will be ski in, ski out, and very attached to the resort here. Areas F and G will be probably somewhat different character. They're on the downhill side of Trapper's Loop Road. Area G is attached really more to the Huntsville area. And so one of the things that we have in the development, this amendment application that we just made, is trying to put a little bit more clarity on how much flexibility we have in planning each of these areas. What we're going to show you here in detail today is a plan and a vision for Area A. And I'm going to go to that, the blow-up of this area A in the next slide. So this is a blow-up again of Area A. Earl's Lodge would be here, the main parking here, the main entry road like so, the flagpoles are here. So here's a bit of the challenge. The, the image we're going to show you today of what our vision of is, is very much in this general area, but it doesn't line up with this road network that was proposed at the time. We've scooched around some of the uses and the colors and so forth. And we believe that that's what the intention overall of the Development Agreement was and is. The Development Agreement itself, the text is only seven pages long, and so it leaves much to be defined as we move forward. We're ready to move forward now. And we want to make sure that we're not crossing wires in our planning work if we, for example, you know, want to move something here over here, or we want to run a road here instead of here. So those would be a couple of examples that we've, we've put just a little bit of text into the, into the proposed amendment. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Riley to discuss the master plan and the vision.
Great, thanks, Jim. So we're going to give you a brief overview of some of the planning work that's taken place over the last couple of years. And we're going to focus in on the first phase of development, as Jim said, more of the zero to three years. And we're also going to touch on sort of the overall build-out vision as part of this process and give you a a brief overview. So if you can go to the next slide, please, Jim. One of the big assets that we found when we started our analysis work and get into the concepts is, is the ridgeline terrain, which is the new learning area, which is the beginner ski terrain and novice. Currently, Snow Basin has a real shortage of beginner terrain and novice terrain, and this whole ridgeline area will be able to expand Snow Basin's current beginner trail by, you know, count by about 75%. As part of that development, there will be a chairlift associated with the beginner skiing to access the beginner terrain. And this ridgeline chairlift will also help move skiers from the existing parking lot in Canyon and potential new parking lots in the Canyon area and up onto the mountain very quickly and efficiently and really streamline that experience in the morning. And as part of the ridgeline terrain and learning area, we're also going to be looking at expanded snowmaking, which is going to allow early season opening and better conditions. Next slide, Jim. This is what we're calling the Phase One Plan for the Earl's Base Area. And you can see in the center, the critical mass or the there, there, we're creating a mixed-use pedestrian village or commercial center around the Earl's Lodge and Grizzly Center. The idea is we're going to have three, a cluster of two or three buildings and some outdoor gathering areas associated with this Village Center, retail shops, commercial space on the ground floor, and then we envision several floors of overnight accommodation above. And this is sort of the center of the resort and everything kind of radiates around it and connects to it. And so you can see we've also shown an upgraded Little Cat Express lift, which takes us up to the Wildcat Base where we've identified a great location for a future hotel and also identified this as potential location for the Club Med, which we're going to talk about in slides coming. This is a hotel that could have its own dedicated learning center, some outdoor activities and other amenities. It would also have a direct connection to the new ridgeline chair and all of the novice terrain and beginner terrain associated with the ridgeline. So this is one of the biggest assets and, and big ideas that we have for Phase One and a real opportunity for Snow Basin to expand on the local market as well as the destination market and skiers. Another big idea was the realignment of the Snow Basin Road. You can see at the top of the screen, we're proposing to realign it behind the parking lots and, and provide a lot more space inside that ring for future parking lots to be developed with rear-loading access. And that would really help cut down the congestion and also the pedestrian and vehicle conflict at the beginning of the day. So by creating those rear-loaded parking lots, we're able to offer a much nicer and streamlined experience for the guests. There will be some limited skier services associated with this Canyon Rim Base Area. And we're also introducing a fire station and public safety building as part of this development. And Ryan will talk a little bit about that later on. And then again, we've looked at expanding the Maples Parking Lot and which is now ready for this season with about 250 stalls. And then also the electrical substation expansion just to the west of that right there. Next slide, please, Jim.
Riley, before we leave this slide, I just want to make one point. This image is one of the Area A images that we'll be seeking approval on. And we realize there, you know, there may be some edits that need to be made to this, but one of the loose requirements in the Development Agreement is that we get master plan approval for each area. And we've submitted two images for that approval. This is one of them. And then at the end, we'll be showing you a full build-out what, what Area A could look like, a concept plan.
Okay, next slide, please. And so just to touch again on the expanded parking for this season for 2021, 22, 350 stalls have now been constructed, 250 in the Maples area and about 100 in the Canyon Rim area. And there is also a huge opportunity to expand with additional parking in the Canyon Rim later and also use the Canyon Ridge Lift for staging. Again, streamlining this gear experience. So again, here's the locations, the future expansion into Canyon Rim with additional stalls later. And in 2021, there's the 100 stalls, Jim has just pointed out. And then again, in the Maples location, which is really convenient. It is, is next to the existing road and the snow front and the beginner zone in Maples. Really convenient for parents dropping off kids, getting direct access there, or just a short walk for people up into what we're calling the Village Center or the Phase One Village Center.
And I think that's.
And I think that's my cue for Bill, again, Bill Five, actually, East West Partners. The, we're the newest player coming to participate in this development. And really what has occurred is that Riley and Ryan and Jim have gotten the project to a point where we're ready to start looking at what the, the actual vertical buildings and the experience might be like going into the future. I mentioned East West Partners was founded in nineteen eighty six and we've worked on many of these villages around the country, around ski country. And that, that's just, that's just our starting point. What we would, what we really bring to the table is a vision to listen and understand the individual ski resort and make sure that as we start to build the vertical infrastructure, we honor kind of the existing skiers and make sure this is, remains a great place for all of our day skiers to visit, but also to start to create a sense of place that people want to come during the off seasons and then also during the, during the midweek and stay overnight. And I think with, with our, our experience, we don't have any plans in place yet. We're going to be doing a lot of work early on with retail and commercial consultants as well as vertical architects to figure out exactly what does this village want to grow up to be. If you'll just go to the next slide, though, Jim. The, the one thing that we do bring that we're very proud of and we want to ensure everybody that we understand is a very strong affinity for sustainability. Almost all of my development partners work in a current ski resort and we all understand the fragility of the environment which work and we want to make sure that once we do build this resort, it, it's a place that everybody wants to come and, and be in the great outdoors. And so one of the things that we bring to the table is a long tradition of sustainability. In fact, back in two thousand and five, we were the first resort developer to get lead certification on a full built out ski resort at North, excuse me, Ski Village at North Star at Tahoe. And we've had great success in dragging along some national partners such as Ritz Carlton. We, we helped them achieve and, and build out a, their first lead certified hotel in, in ski country as well. We certainly aren't stopping there. The, the image that I have up on the screen now is a project that we're currently working on at the base of Snowmass, which will be the first all electric condominium project in ski country and will achieve net zero. So by using all electric and harnessing solar, solar energy, this project will be one of the first of its kind anywhere, let alone in ski country. So we really have a culture of sustainability and we're really looking forward to investigating and figuring out what are all the things that play into what's going to make Snow Basin a fantastic future resort community with sustainability in mind. And I think with that, I'm turning it over to Ryan so he can talk about how we actually get there with horizontal infrastructure.
Oh, yeah, yes. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Thank you, Bill. Again, as a civil engineer on the project, my team and I have been involved since about twenty nineteen. At that time, we started looking at the existing master plans, the existing development agreements and working with Riley's group and Jim and trying to figure out how do we actually implement some of the ideas and, and whatnot. So we've made a lot of progress in that time. From a water perspective, Snow Basin is essentially a single individual user of water. They have three wells on their property that provide all the water for commercial needs and indoor and outdoor as well as snowmaking. Clearly, those, those sources, those wells will have to be expanded and new wells will be developed. In order to do that, we intend to petition Weber County for the development of a public water infrastructure district, a special improvement district. That will allow Snow Basin to develop out their water resources and provide water services throughout the development. From a sewer perspective, Snow Basin, the wastewater that's generated on Snow Basin is piped to a series of sewer lagoons, some ponds that are along Trapper's Loop Road. Many of you are probably aware of them. That treatment facility is essentially maxed out. It doesn't have capacity for much development. So we have a dilemma from a sewer perspective in, in what do we do with wastewater? Right now, what we're exploring is annexation into the Mountain Greens Sewer Improvement District. They have a treatment facility in Mountain Green that is in process on a large expansion and modification of their treatment facility to provide high level of nutrient removal in their, from their wastewater. So this is a highly sustainable solution that requires from us, from Snow Basin, a new pipeline from Snow Basin into Mountain Green, but little else. Other places where we've made progress is on the traffic study. We've secured Fair and Pierce Traffic Planners to provide an update to the traffic study that was prepared in two thousand and nine, two thousand and ten for the original Development Agreement. That study's been completed. It was just completed this year. And it focused on the regional impacts associated with traffic as a result of the development. So, you know, we're talking about Snow Basin Road, we're talking about Trapper's Loop Road, talking about I eighty four and Ogden, Ogden Valley, Weber Canyon. And what we're finding is that the roadways in general have, have plenty of capacity. There are a handful of infrastructure intersections that need improvements as the development progresses and additional traffic flow is added. But we have, we have the analysis completed on those things. So let's flip to the next slide. We'll talk about the other three bullets here. Again, Riley spoke about the realignment of Trapper or of Snow Basin Road around the Canyon Rim area. That realignment is important for us. It allows us to rear load our parking lots, thus minimizing interaction between traffic and pedestrians as pedestrians access the mountain. Second thing I want to point out is the fire station, public safety building. We have that right off the, right off of Snow Basin Road. And that's a requirement of the Development Agreement. We have it planned in our first few, in the, in the first phase here. Last thing I want to point out is at the bottom of the screen, the substation. So Snow Basin currently has a substation that provides power to the resort, but that will have to grow. Right now, we're planning roughly hundred and fifty percent expansion kind of by, by footprint of the, of the substation. We're in process with rock and mountain power on that substation expansion and that is, is moving forward. So that substation expansion will provide enough power to, to support the entire development of phase of, of Area A. And that build out will be described by Riley right now.
Great, thanks, Ryan. And as previously mentioned, we wanted to give you a high level sneak peek of what the twenty to twenty five year vision or build out master plan might look like. And I do want to point out that this is a conceptual plan. We do expect that this plan will evolve and change over the duration of this process and based on feedback and comments and just changing vision of, of the team. And so what this is, these are placeholders showing you where the roads may be and some building footprints, but basically showing you that the village at Earl's Base is truly the heart of this whole resort and the sense of place that we're trying to create. We want to have a vibrant atmosphere that is a gathering place for people to enjoy the snow front, some of the commercial offerings and other recreational amenities throughout the resort. It is truly intended to be a pedestrian oriented environment, meaning that when people come for a few days or for a week, they'll park their car underground and they won't have to use their car again for the whole duration of their stay. All of these little pockets and amenities will be accessed with pedestrian trail networks and biking trails and also using lift systems throughout the resort to move around the facility. Again, just getting people out of their cars and using other means besides the shuttle. And so you can see we've got the heart of the village in the center. We have the canyon ridge that we expanded on. We're also going to look at expanding the canyon even further with another learning center, some moving carpets, another chairlift, and also creating a new snow beach down at the bottom of Canyon Rim with some active overnight accommodation and also some limited commercial services. You can see now that this is the build out version of the Canyon Rim parking. Substantial increase in the parking lots, making it really convenient for people arriving at the day to go skiing for the day. So for the day users, very streamlined experience. They can take the ridge chair up, slide over to Wildcat or slide all the way down to the village snow front and access the mountain very quickly without even having to go through any other facilities. The idea, if people want to go up and use the village, there will be a new village lift from the Canyon Rim and the parking, bringing guests directly up to the village and the snow front area. And then also having a direct connection to the upgraded Little Cat Express, which would move beginner skiers on this terrain here and, and return cycle skiing or moving people directly up to the hotel or future Club Med lift. We've also looked at additional satellite parking also in the bottom of Maples, looking at potential overflow parking and having a direct connection to Maples. And then Maples will also have an expansion of a new learning center with additional moving carpets, a snow play zone, and also the addition of a, of a platter lift. As part of this, we've also identified a location for employee housing down in the lower Maples area next to Snow Basin Road. And again, I want to express that this is the twenty to twenty five year build out plan. We do expect this will evolve, but this is sort of a high level approach on some of our ideas that the team has been working on for the last two years. And with that, I'd like to pass it over to Jim to introduce and speak a bit more about Club Med.
Thanks, Riley. So we've, we've been working with Club Ned now for two to three years, actually, exploring a relationship, checking fit. And we think this is really a wonderful opportunity for both, both groups and an excellent fit. Club Med has seventy resorts worldwide. Of those, about twenty four are in ski destinations, mountain spots. Most of those are in the French Alps. There's one in North America that's about to open in December. That's at Charlevoix in Quebec. And that'll be their first reentry into North America. So our location, Snow Basin, would be their first, first ski location in the United States in many, many years. A couple of things that we think make it a good fit. One is just the quality of the experience and the, the focus on, on customers and, and and having fun. Several of us were able to go and, and experience their product in, in the French Alps at several different locations. And they really do a good job at just making things fun and easy, very active. Another really important feature is most, most people are using it for a week long experience. And they're coming from potentially all around the world. That's a very good fit with our season pass holder base that for, you know, where the most heavy emphasis is on weekend skiing. So this lets us balance out the use, use of the resort during the whole week. So here is just a shot. This would be the Wildcat Site, which is where they're slated to, to build the hotel. So the program is for three hundred rooms, all inclusive, and an additional hundred and twenty staff rooms. And these would be their employees living at the hotel. A big part of the Club Med experience is being guided and breaking up into kids groups and all kinds of very high touch activities. And so we think it's really cool to have that, that many people living at the resort that can help, help activate it, be very efficient in terms of, you know, keeping cars off the road and so forth to have employees living there. So that's a brief introduction to Club Med. They are very actively designing now. IBI is their architect. I anticipate that you'll, they'll be presenting more detailed plans, a design review package here in the, sometime in the next few months. So with that, I just wanted to wrap up. I'm going to turn off here the show and go back to our, our faces so we can talk here a little bit. We, we wanted to, you know, at this point entertain whatever questions you might have. I also wanted to give just, I guess, a little bit of a preview of, of what's coming in terms of this Development Agreement Amendment. And again, it's kind of technical, so I won't go very deep, but just to hit sort of the highlights. One would be approval of those two images that we showed you today or with whatever modifications they need to be approved, but those would be our Area A Master Plan submission. So, so that's, that's one call to action. The second would be, I discussed the flexibility of the area master plans. So there's a little bit of language in the Development Agreement that relates to that flexibility. The third is the approval process for area master plans. The Development Agreement, again, is very brief. I think essentially all it says is that the county will approve plans, but it doesn't really say who or how. And we wanted to, in particular, make sure that we're not getting set up in a way where we like have to amend the Development Agreement every time the, these master plans evolve. We anticipate lots of change and lots of evolution, especially in the early stages of each one of these areas. They're, they're big enough areas that each one will take on kind of a life of its own and have a lot of evolution. And so we're asking that those approvals be able to happen at either the staff level or the planning commission level as is appropriate and, and not require amending the Development Agreement again. The fourth item is there's a reference to a cap of, of a hundred and fifty hotel rooms in Area A that, that we don't feel like is consistent with what, what we're trying to accomplish here. A big picture with the resort. It's very important that Area A be vital, be active, and we're, we're trying to encourage as many, you know, active lodging units there as possible. We're already bouncing around plans for potentially three different hotels, including the Club Med, so we're going to be requesting that that, that that cap be deleted. And then lastly, the methodology of how the density gets counted. We're asking for a change in that and really wanting to simplify it and base our model on what was approved at Powder Mountain. We were out in front of them and, and sort of creating the DRR one zoning and being kind of the first resort. You know, and they built on that. And I think they may be refined and improved to some degree how density gets counted. And so specifically hotels, we're proposing that hotels be counted based on the equivalent of three rooms equalling one residential unit, which is the same thing as Powder Mountain. And it seems easy to apply and that that makes sense to us. We're also asking to exclude commercial areas from density in, in a few areas. So specifically in the ski areas, Areas A and B. We're not asking that they be excluded in Areas F and G. Essentially, ski resorts struggle to get their commercial to go. And so we don't, largely due to the seasonality. And so we don't want to have anything else sort of dragging, I guess, on, on the commercial. So we're asking that those spaces, retail spaces, restaurants, et cetera, be excluded from being counted as density in the ski areas. Also that ski support, things like the, the day lodges and, you know, ski rental shops and ski school, all those kinds of functions that those not being, you know, counted as density. And also that the employee housing be excluded from, from density so that we can be, again, encouraging those uses in particular. So I think that's, that's a bit of, again, a, a preview of what's in, in the submission on Frontier. And at that point, we, we turn it back to you and whatever questions you might have for our group.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Commissioners, questions?
All right. Well, thank you very much. Um, commissioners, questions for the Snow Basin team?
Um, I'm not sure that my audio is working. Can you hear me, John Howell?
Yep.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, um, I was on the board when they, uh. When it was introduced uh a few years back when uh. When Mr. Holden's son was uh running the operation, they took us around and showed us where everything was going to be. And uh, he indicated that they were going to build two five star hotels, and I asked why. And he said the reason was to keep the, uh, keep the price down on rooms. Uh, they indicated also whether it was going to be two golf courses. Spread out and the whole project actually was spread out pretty much. And they were going to have hiking trails, they're gonna have uh private homes, condos and things like that. Is, is that in this plan also?
Uh, and elements of that are, are in our, in our plan. At this point, we don't have like a, a standalone five star hotel at the start, although the Club Med would be in the four to five star. Range, so it's going to be, I think, a high end experience. We're also exploring uh as one product type, a landscape hotel. Which would be a little bit less traditional, but I think would be also a very kind of. You know, high quality, um, unique experience. So those are two things that are in our, you know, early, early planning stage, not the Club Med, it's well advanced. The landscape hotel ideas at an earlier planning stage at this point. Beyond that, we don't have any specific uh. Uh, plans at this immediate phase of doing like a five star hotel. Sometimes you'll find in the evolution of a resort like this. That like the values build over time and that it makes sense, you know, more. Towards the end of a phase or, or the end of a resort as it gets more established. So we do have some locations in the master plan. Uh, like where our existing um service buildings are, the two maintenance buildings. Over the long term, and this again could be twenty years from now or longer, we think that's a prime site. You know, that ultimately could be a five star hotel. Um. You know, we're also considering. Ourselves doing some, some vertical potentially being in the hotel business. That's one of the conversations. So. There are lots of different possibilities as you can uh sense from. You know, from the conversation here. The golf course part at this point is not. Um, it's just not our priority here at the beginning. We feel like it's important to be focused. And to get the, the resort going and to do that around the ski and what's, what's there now. So at the same time, it remains in our master plan. There are golf courts, there's a golf course in Area D. I think there may be one in Area F as well. You know, in the master plan. So I think those, those remain there for, you know, future consideration.
Another item uh that was discussed and was shown to us. That uh your septic system where it currently is now was going to be moved way down the hill. And, and uh, Mr. Holden Senior, uh, when he had his uh son-in-law running the operation, was not happy about. Where the, he put it, and that's why he was relieved of that and his son took over.
The, the plan again that we're investigating would be moving that, moving the treatment of the sewage down to Mountain Green and annexing into that sewer district.
Yeah, well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be an, an evolution of how we're treating, treating the sewage currently.
This Jeff Burton, I have a question. The, the mountain right now gets really crowded the last couple. Are there plans to expand the mountain so that all this additional? Uh, people using the mountain will not be. Overwhelming the facilities that are there now.
Yeah, you, you know, I, I think there's a perception that the mountain is crowded because it's crowded. Crowded at a few choke points. Um, we struggled particularly say on a Saturday morning to load the mountain. And so a lot of the improvements you're seeing today with additional parking, additional ski lifts and so forth. Once, once somebody is up on the mountain and they're dispersed. Uh, we feel like o- overall that that, that, you know, is a pretty good experience. But we know there are again, a few bottleneck points and there's some specific lifts and all that uh our general manager and their team are looking at. But one, one point of comparison that, that I've heard Davy make frequently is, is with Breckenridge. Uh, we have three thousand skiable acres at Snow Basin. Uh, Breckenridge has the same number of skiable acres. And they host roughly four times the number of skiers that we do. And, and Riley and his team too are, are expert in this. I mean, Riley, do you want to a- address this at all?
Yeah, it's something that our team is working on right now and, and looking at the phase one. Um, bottlenecks as Jim spoke about and getting the staging and uphill capacity increase. But we're also looking at the overall mountain itself and the lift system, the trail system and potential expansion areas. So to answer your question. Yes, this is also part of what we're working on right now. We've developed sort of the base and the staging facilities a little bit further. Uh, than where we are with the mountain, but we're working with Davy and team and the Snow Basin team to look at the big picture. So it will not be independent.
Thank you.
Jerry, I have a quick question.
Uh huh.
So economically in this master plan, what element is. Or component is the most important making it work economically? Could you share?
Yeah, yeah, I would, I would say it's filling in the midweek. It, it's, it's. And, and that means lodging and that means evolving the resort, you know, to be more than it, it is as a day ski resort. Um, our, our Saturdays, you know, are very busy. Our Sundays and Fridays are quite busy as well. But Monday through Thursday, uh, you know, we, we run at relatively low capacity. So filling in that midweek, I would say is sort of the, the key economic factor.
So would Club Med be a large component of that then of making it? Sustainable?
Yes. Other questions? We don't want to draw you out if we, if we've warned you out or exhausted you here with all this information, then we. Again, we're looking forward to being with you on the twenty-sixth and on the twentieth, if you'd like to. Do a field trip or if that date doesn't work, we could look, look at a different date as well, so.
Is there something a little more concrete that we can look at uh at this point or is that still in the? It's hard to have a lot of questions when you don't have a lot of the details.
Yeah, in terms of the actual um application and all, I, I'm assuming uh. Director Grover and his team will do, kind of do what they do. And so we, we submitted it on Friday on the Frontier. And we'll be in dialogue with them, and I'm, I'm not sure exactly how their cadence works with. Their analysis and, and getting the information to you, but that's, that, that's where the. You know, the details and the guts are reside at this point.
Appreciate Mr. Hill. Um, we, we were looking forward to those kinds of details. Uh, a lot of this. You know, when it comes to how they count hotel rooms or how they. Look at flexibility, I, I'm pretty sure those are going to be county commissioner. Um. Rulings, if you will, and, and we'll probably be asked for recommendations for or against, but um. My guess is the staff will review it all heavily and give us their recommendations and we'll probably look at it and. Give our recommendations and then it's really going to be your team and the commissioners, I'm sure. Um. But the more details we have, the more we can, you know, maybe be of some help.
Terrific. And we, we are anticipating this obviously being a two-step process with. Planning Commission first and then on to the County Commission.
Sure. That's a, a tough road ahead of you and we've. Wish you the best of luck.
Oh, come on, Cher. Let's be, let's be.
Well, I mean, it's a thought to develop. That's a big project. It's a big uh. And, and we're sure you'll do really well at it. How's that?
I, 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 I will share with you just on a personal front. To, to some degree, I'm, I'm kind of coming out of retirement to do this. Um, I, I, I'm the former managing partner with East West uh in Park City and um. Stephen Holding called me three years ago. And this really is, it's a remarkable um opportunity and. I'm delighted also with the talent that, that we've been able to attract. I didn't.
I have no, I have no audio. I can't hear the meeting, the Zoom meeting as one of the commissioners. Uh, this is Jack Howell.
Well, with that, I should probably call it done.
Okay, well, uh, we very much appreciate it and appreciate your approach. And all the town meetings, that's all very much appreciated. So keep up the great work.
Hey, Karen, I have a question if that's all right.
Sure, go ahead, Trevor.
I've searched everything and even. Meeting even. But I, I, I.
Hey, go ahead.
I've looked at everything and I can't seem to pick it up.
I'm doing. You mentioned the realignment of the old Snow Basin Road. Is there, there plans or talks to? I know that's closed over the winter. Is there talks about maybe having that open? Um, is that part of the plan? Is that something you're looking at as they give another avenue of access up into that resort as it grows?
Yeah, the, the alignment that we're showing is actually, I guess you could call it the alignment of not old Snow Basin Road, but Snow Basin Road, the main entry and now. That comes in from Trapper's Loop. We have heard through this whole, um, you know, kind of our public outreach. Process about the wildfire and concerns with Old Snow Basin Road. And secondary egress. Uh, we have mentioned that to, to the county. It, it's a county road. And so it's really, I think, you know, primarily a question kind of back to the, to the county and county staff of whether. Makes sense to, to try to reopen it, you know, partially, fully, whatever, whatever.
Jim, you got muted.
Sorry, did, did, did you hear any of that?
Most of it.
You said you were gonna pay to open the road.
Nice. Short summary was it's a county road.
Awesome. Well, we'd love to see another exit uh in an emergency if nothing else, so that'd be great. All right. Well, thanks again, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, appreciate the presentation. Okay, uh, our second work session discussion will be regarding the Eden Village Zone. Uh, I understand Steve Burton and Charlie, you will be presenting.
Yes, yeah. Hi, planning commissioners. It's good to see all of you. Um. I wanted to make sure that Commissioner Howell could hear me. Okay, did he? Is he on? I see him.
I can see him.
Okay. Commissioner Howell, can you hear me okay? Does anybody, is anybody communicating with him?
Jack, if you can hear us, wave.
Yeah, Martin's trying to work things out with him.
Okay. Cool. Yeah, we could, uh, we could hear him when he was uh unmuted. It sounds like. It sounds like he might need to uh maybe turn up his volume or something on, on his computer, but uh, okay. Well, um. Commissioners, uh, I think it was last month or the month before, um, Charlie and I talked to you about. Um, something that uh staff has been working on for was actually since two thousand eighteen is when we started, but it's. It's the Eden Village areas. Um, we've, we've met with you a few times about it, so I hope, I, I hope I don't become. Uh, you know, boring or, or annoying talking about it, but I guess the reason we want to talk to you tonight about it is because. Um, we're planning on having a public hearing for the adoption of the Eden. Village ordinance, um, and that'll be later this month. So we'll have the first public hearing with you. Um, ideally, we'll just have the one public hearing with the planning commission. Which would be on the twenty-sixth. And then we'll move it, uh, you know, i- if, if there's a positive recommendation, ideally there would be from you. Um, we, we take it to the, the county commission uh for them to, to have it adopted. Um, last time we met, like I said, it was either last month or the month before. Um, I think I, I think I walked through. Um, the entire ordinance with you. Um, not much has really, I don't think really anything has changed since, since we walked through. But uh, I'll probably just, just for a, you know, five or 10 minutes, probably just kind of. Go over this generally with you again so that you're more familiar with it when we come back for a public hearing in a few weeks. Um, and then if, if any of you have any questions, feel free to stop me anytime. Um, but just generally to remind everyone, the purpose of this is to have what we call. Um, s- uh, small area plants um in these, the Ogden Valley General Plan talks about mixed use villages throughout the valley. And the ones that we've started on um are Old Town and New Town Eden. Um, and basically the general plan says adopt specific standards in these areas. That would make it almost like a, like a main street. Um, reason we're starting with new, or sorry, Old Town and New Town is you've got Old Town Eden that has. Um, the, the general store and the blacksmith shop, uh, which provide a really good starting point for some kind of a mixed use village. Um, by mixed use, what we're referring to would be you'd have your commercial retail that is along the street front. And that you walk by kind of similar to, you know, downtown Ogden where it's, it's, it's meant for um commercial retail. Um, but you also have a really, you know, a wide, it'll have a really wide sidewalk. Um, and it'll be an inviting place. And of course, the, the, the middle of specifically in Old Town, even the middle, you'll have the Eden Park. Um, with this type of a code, um, it's called a form-based code. I know we've talked to you a little bit about it before, but. With a form-based code, we're, we're focusing more on the way the streets and the building looks, the buildings look as opposed to. Uses that are allowed or conditionally allowed or not allowed. With this, it's not something that, that you actually see in any of our current ordinances, but we're going to have a street cross section. Um, what we've done is we put a few options in here. Um, and we'll, we'll probably want your input either tonight or at the public hearing. Um, but as we look at these streets, we've got a plan for a walkable community that has multimodal. Active transportation. So you can see here, you've, you, we've got a really wide sidewalk, fourteen feet. Um, and then also you've got a bike lane. Um, and then just some, some parking. Uh, we, we wanted you to look at these options and maybe provide us some feedback. Uh, we think we can make. We think we can make probably any of these work, um, but we've been kind of going back and forth with angle parking and parallel parking. Obviously, parallel parking is going to be more narrow, would require less, less, ne- less wide streets. But in all these, you see we're, we're providing for um bikers and cyclists and pedestrians. Um. I'm gonna go down here to show you, um, during the public hearing, we'll have a better image for you. Um, Charlie's got a, a map that has this, that has this mapped out a little bit better, but you can see these streets. Um. So here's, you got the Eden Park, north is up in this case. Um, the, these will be the streets that will be the primary focus specifically in. In the old town area. Um, in this image that we'll have in a few weeks, it'll also include the streets in, in the new town. Uh, we're talking about alleyways. Uh, I think we mentioned that last time we met that we're going to have internal alleyways. So that you don't have um parking that, you know, you're not looking at parking when you're walking along the main street. You're looking at the nice, nice buildings. Um. Let me show you, I guess, kind of the main points are. Probably the way the buildings look, and I know we've gone over this as well. Um, and I think you provided some good feedback on that, but. In uh Old Town Eden, we're gonna have a. in, uh, Old Town Eden, we're going to have a, uh, architectural look between, it's, it, it should be between the, the late 1890s um, to, I think, 1910. Yeah, late 1880s to the early 1910s. This is specifically in Old Town. These just provide general examples of, of that architecture and, and materials. Obviously, this is kind of a, uh, Charlie makes fun of me whenever we look at this slide here. It's kind of a dilapidated building, but just in general, this provides, uh, what, what the architecture, uh, and materials should look like in this area. So we just wanted to provide a, you know, a few different examples. Um, and obviously not, not every building should look the same. There should be, um, a little bit of difference in, in each building as it develops. And then going over to New Town, um, we got more of the agrarian style, making the buildings look like barns, um, but in a way that, uh, I, I guess I don't, I don't, a, a, a really nice barn. I'll put it that way. So you've got, uh, wood, uh, wood siding, make it look like a barn. It'll be right along the street front. You can have, uh, canopies. Ideally, and in this image it does, you're not going to be able to see because there's not a street front, but ideally this would be kind of that 14-foot sidewalk. So in this plan, we'll have these images. We might have a little bit different images, um, depending on, you know, your recommendations and what the county commission wants, but generally these provide a a pretty good example of what these, what the building architecture should look like. Um, so that's what we're going to have before you net in, in a few weeks. Um, we're, what we'll probably do is go over it word for word just so we can have that, um, on record and whoever's here for the public hearing can be more familiar with what we're proposing. Um, for anyone worried about, um, us, um, you know, imposing these strict rules on these developers, I'll say we, we did have a meeting, we did have a steering committee meeting, several of them. Um, with, uh, landowners, commercial landowners and residents of this area who provided this feedback to us. Um, we're hoping that, you know, we can have as many people that can make it to the public hearing to provide their comments. But yeah, that's basically what we're going to present in a few weeks. It'll be, um, in a, in a, in a more organized format and we'll walk you through it. But any questions for right now?
I was, um, I'd like to see maybe some samples. I, I would like to see the development in Old Town Eden really coordinate with what's already been done there, uh, by Mr. Best. I think he's started something and is continuing to expand. And it would just, I think, uh, really be nice if the looks would be, uh, coordinate the, uh, some of the samples that you give, if they, of what it could look like, if they could coordinate with what's already been established there.
Yeah.
Even with the hard side and, you know, Emmy James and it'd be great if they fit in a little bit nicer.
Absolutely. So he's got.
And I'm sorry, let me also, even in the New Town Eden, uh, Mr. Best's building that he's done there with the brick, it's really nice too. I would like to even, I don't know if we would need to go with the barn look so much, but even what he started over there would be nice to continue on to. I would like to see what the rest of the signing commission thinks about that.
Steve, John Howell? Can you hear me?
Yep.
Oh, okay. I've been having trouble with my computer. Anyhow, um, have you ever thought, you know, that area where Old Town right now is where the blacksmith shop and that street is narrow and then you have the park across the street is to have that as a promenade rather than a street and have the people go around that area and, because it, it butts up against the park right across, across the street and, and have parking in the back of some of those, well, you already have planned that in the back of those buildings. And maybe even have a shuttle going through there and taking people around or picking them up in the parking lots and things. I was up in Montana and they had a thing just like that.
Interesting. And, and Commissioner Howell, you're saying, um, that, uh, it'd be more of a walking street, like, like, like no, no driving along that street?
Just that area, uh, where, because it is narrow through there, you're not going to get much parking in there and parallel parking trying to back out. Just look at 25th Street. It's awfully hard because you can't see. And, and, uh, but if it was just a, a, say a promenade where you had, uh, tables and places to sit and, and you could have bike paths through there even if they wanted to do that, but, uh, not any automobiles or parking of any automobiles.
Steve, I'd like to just also comment, I, you know, I think you and Charlie have done a great job here trying to bring some kind of pattern to what we have going already. Um, some consistency, and I really think that's what's been missing. So kudos to Mr. Best for kind of leading the way. And I'd love, I think we all love to see Old Town look more like Old Town. And even the new town, you know, with some flexibility, try to stick closer to each other so you don't end up with stuck over here and log over there and Old Town over here and modern over there. And I mean, just pick a horse and go as flexibly as you can. So I, you know, and this is a pretty good approach. I, I've looked at it quite a bit and I feel like you guys have done a good job of giving it some structure so people have a way to do it and not necessarily pin them down to exactly one thing or another. So I, I feel like you've done a good job.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks for your comments. And, uh, yeah, Shanna and, uh, Jack and John, um, we appreciate the comments. Uh, Shanna, you're right, that, uh, Scott Best's building is a really nice building. Um, we're anticipating that not everybody is going to be able to afford to build something like that. I, I know that that was like, you know, one of his, um, uh, I don't know if it was like a bucket list thing for, for Mr. Best to do, but it, it, it certainly is such a nice building, but we're, we're anticipating that many, uh, many of the developments that happen will, will primarily focus on the facade right along the front. Um, it's nice with, um, the blacksmith shop because we get to see kind of all sides of it and, and it really does look nice. Um, but yeah, we, we have written into this ordinance, the, the requirement to blend, basically blend into the blacksmith shop, but not have it be, not have it match. Um, so we're going to have kind of that, that metal, um, the metal building base i- is one of the requirements. Um, you could use brick or wood. Uh, but we think the, the way it's written, we think that, uh, it will, it will require any buildings along the street front to be, um, to, to tie into the area nicely.
So Steve, I had a comment. This is, uh, Justin Torman. I, I, I recall there was, it seemed like it almost bottlenecked a little bit as far as the roadway going through that whole area. And I, and I worry that with all the development that's going to happen in this valley, essentially tripling the population and however many years, that, that is, that is such a main road for valley residents, um, including myself to get to work over Trapper's Loop. I go right through downtown Eden. But I just wonder, has there been a civil engineer that's been involved at all and, and looking at this to make sure that the, the roadway capacity is in line with kind of what this conceptual design is?
Yeah, really good question. Uh, oh, sorry. Go ahead. Did you have other, anything else?
That was it for me.
Okay. Yeah, we have. We've actually worked with our county engineer, um, Gary Myers, as we've come up with these, uh, street cross-sections um, to make sure that the planned width, uh, that that will work with, with the traffic that's coming through here. And so, um, we, we've worked pretty closely with our own engineers. Um, we haven't outsourced. I don't know that we've really felt the need to. Um, but we've, we, we do have the support of, of the county engineering division on the, um, the width of the street. You're right. It, it, it does kind of bottleneck. Um, we, we certainly don't want this to be like a, a, you know, high-speed highway. Um, just because there is currently, there's a commercial element to it that I think should be recognized and people should slow down for it. Um, but I guess to answer your, a long way to answer your question is yes, yeah, we've, we've had our, our own civil engineers look at this as well.
Okay, thanks.
Hey, Steve?
Yeah.
Can you hear me through Zoom? I can hear you right in the cubicle next door. I don't know if you can hear me.
Yeah.
Perfect. So the other thing to think about, I'm gonna, I'm gonna hit share on my screen here. Um, is that with the other, um, road, the other streets that are being planned in the area, um, as, as the area grows, uh, it actually, it more than doubles, if not triples, the, uh, street capacity uh, through this area. So let me hit share on this. Hang on one second.
While you're doing that, I wanted to let, I think, um, last meeting, um, Commissioner Torman made a good comment about the, um, the windows, um, the fenestration along the front. I think we had 60%. And I think, um, Commissioner Torman had a, a suggestion to make that a little bit more so that you're looking at, you know, more into the retail space that it captures more of that street front. And so we changed it from 60 to, I think, 75. So that was a, 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 a nice, um, comment that you had and, and we'll go over that also in, in the public hearing in a few weeks.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
So something to, to think about, um, as you're looking at what I'm, what I'm showing you here, uh, and as I, I discuss it, what we're going to see in a couple of, of weeks from now, in that public hearing, a couple of weeks from now, is it's an ordinance, it's the, the village, um, area or the mixed uses, uh, excuse me, mixed use Eden Village Zone. Um, specific to this area, uh, it is as much a placeholder as it is, uh, the enaction of a zone. Um, we know that we're, we're behind the curve, uh, we're, we're behind where we want to be by, by, by at least two years um, on creating an Eden Village Zone. And so, uh, rather than going through the process of um, creating the broader picture, uh, and, and spending all the time and losing valuable time and having development, uh, coming in without um, the opportunity to, um, create this, uh, this village area, we've decided to move forward with creating the, uh, Eden Mixed Use Village Zone. And it's kind of just a bare bones, um, idea, uh, bare bones regulations for the area that will help keep what Scott Best has created there and, and continue to, um, create that or use that kind of creativity, uh, to, uh, apply to additional buildings in the area. But it's, um, it's not the end. And in fact, I think we've got a lot more coming, including the, um, the color pictures that you're looking at here. So the small village plan, so what, what, what Steve has been presenting is the Eden Village Zone. Small village plan will be coming on its heels. Um, and it will include the, the bigger picture, uh, kind of like what you're looking at here. It's the 30 to 60-year build-out. Um, where we, we try and anticipate how things will grow over time and how we can phase them in. Um, and again, um, cart before horse or, or horse before cart, whichever it is you're thinking it may be, we wanted to make sure we didn't lose all the opportunity that, we have right now to work with landowners to create some pretty, pretty incredible places, uh, just because we don't have a mechanism to do it. And so that's why we've got the ordinance out ahead of the plan itself. But the, you know, a lot more that can be done and, and that's where we're looking at the, the plans. The plan will create, um, the policies and principles. For the most part, what our ordinance is drawing from is the policies and principles of our general plan. Um, and, and so it takes the, the minimum amount that's in the general plan regarding this village, um, and it applies it as part of the zoning code.
Charlie? Oh, sorry.
Sorry. Uh, hang on one second, but the, um, the plan, it goes on to say, we need to do more focused village, um, planning. And so that's what this color picture is and, and what it will become in the future. So when you're looking at these, uh, uh, streets and the street layout in the area, we do have that one highway that goes through and you do want to continue to use that as the main highway, as your village, um, as it buds. And that's because as the vehicles are going down that road, they're seeing the activities, they're seeing the window signs, they're seeing the, um, the window features and, uh, it's, it's easier to attract just the traveling public by having the main part of the traffic going down this road. As this road becomes crowded or congested, as people are going down this road, because this area does become a draw at that point, um, or because the area grows, that's the point where we need to be looking at some of the other streets in the area and how to make good connections to those streets so that we can alleviate the pressure on just one street and have, uh, other streets share the burden. Um, so kind of like what you see here, um, this is, you know, the, the main route that comes out of, uh, New Town Eden, comes into Old Town Eden, you got the park here. So we'd be proposing a roundabout essentially right here, and that's kind of the anchor on one side of, uh, the Eden Village. We'd probably be looking at another roundabout somewhere down in the, in this location so that as vehicles are coming back and forth, looking for somewhere to park or where they want to go, they can flip around as they need to. They'll also be able to go around the park, um, in the future, but long-term, um, as this gets, uh, uh, congested, um, then we open up opportunities to go around that. And so that's one of the benefits of having the grid network. Uh, not to say that we want to spread the traffic out through na- uh, residential neighborhoods, but you can see the plan and with these red lines, the plan is to allow for commercial opportunities on these blocks. And one thing that Steve, um, showed was, uh, uh, streets, uh, coming out this far as well if Mr. Best ever decided to sell and develop. So right now we're working with, uh, Mr. Best and, and his team to essentially provide a plan that doesn't, uh, lead to the development of his land, but if he chooses to do so, we're going to need to have a backup plan. And we're hoping that, um, he's on board with us on that. So does that, does that help alleviate some of the concern that this major corridor, the commuter corridor is going to be uh, so backed up and it's going to be unusable? Uh, the intention is to spread that out.
Yeah, that, that answers the question on that. I just, it seemed like it was more, you're going to have to slow down because there's going to be these buildings really close to the, to the road and you're going to have to slow down because right now it's a pretty quick road to get through there.
Yeah.
It just seems like it's going to be congested naturally because of buildings being closer to the roadway and whatnot.
Yeah, yeah. And, and I think you're right. I think it will be, um, kind of diversifying the transportation network in the area, I think will help, help alleviate that.
I would imagine it's going to be a lot like 25th Street at some point, and we're going to need a 26th Street or a 24th Street to get around it.
That's precisely right.
Here, I have a question.
Uh-huh.
Um, so I'm out, engineered, uh, street scape that you show.
Steve, you want to pull that back up?
Yeah. If look, is the road widened at all? And if so, then how does the, what are you doing for the canal? Or do you see that as being? I know you wanted to keep it open because it's open water, but I, it seems like it would be a tight fit with the park property with that canal on that side. Can you address that?
So we haven't, we haven't gone, uh, up to that specific location to find out how far away the canal is. Or we haven't pulled a measuring tape. Um, we're not, we're not super concerned about it because if the canal is, uh, in the way we would work with the canal company to adjust it um, as may be needed. We do know that Mr. Best, the design that was created on their property did set those buildings back to provide quite a bit of space out there. And so what you'll see, what you see on this, on the cross-sections that Steve has here, it doesn't actually show that specific cross-section where the, the park is on one side. Um, and on that one side where the park is, um, we would either work with the canal company if the canal is a little bit too close to where the existing street is, or we would work within the existing right-of-way, which is already about a hundred feet there. Uh, just to adjust the centerline of the road to be where it needs to be. So we've got all the amenities within the right-of-way without, without messing with the canal.
Quick question too. Uh, I know I'm on the Eden Mon- Monument Committee that we're putting up. Well, working with Echo Family to put a monument in the corner south. Um, southwest corner. And so that's my only con- Southwest corner. And so that's my only concern if that gets put in there, if that if the park corner there would be eaten up by that. If we need to make a consideration now, I don't know. I I know they came in for submitting a plan. I think they submitted it today. So I just wanted to make sure that that wouldn't be an issue. After spending all the money to put that in.
Yeah.
In the next week or so.
I I appreciate you pointing that out. We we were aware that monument was coming in. We're excited to see it going. Um where it's located, we'll just wanna make sure it's set back far enough that there's not gonna be concern. Are you aware, Shannon, is it gonna be on the east side of the canal or is it gonna be closer to the street than that?
It it will be on the east side of the canal, but we wanted some uh the Echoes came up and looked at the site Friday, and they would like some land enough room for a little bit of landscaping, some trees to and maybe even a little bit of berming to for the sun in the uh in the evening when people are looking facing into the uh looking at the statue and sitting there viewing it, so.
Okay. So I think the the best thing to do, and if if needed, we can go up there and we can bring the county engineer, maybe even the county surveyor up. And uh we could take a look at how far it is between Mr. Best's front, um the building frontage. Uh where that building is and just measure all the way across the street, the amount of um right away with that we would need to even even looking at the um worst case scenario, well, we need, what was it, Steve, a hundred and seventeen feet? We can come up there and just take that measurement and make sure that if we draw a parallel line, you guys know exactly where that line would be. And uh just make sure you're off of that. I think that would work.
Uh Charlie, John L., um you know, the canal could be piped and the sidewalk could be put on top of the pipe. That would give you a lot more room on that road.
It absolutely would. And that that would be, so for one part, that I think that would be worst case scenario is we can um pipe it. I mean, that's what we do for a lot of these other um street adjacent canals. I say worst case scenario because it would be really nice to have that water feature running alongside the park. Um whether it be a canal or or any other kind of water feature, it's nice that it's a canal and it's a it's a water conveyance system. I mean, it'd be cool if it were. I don't know, even a a little bit wider pond, uh assuming we've got enough space to to do that. But yeah, worst case scenario, if uh if there's just not enough space or we eat into uh the the playing fields or whatever, we could always pipe that. We would have to work with a canal company to do so.
I've got some comments. This Jeff Burton. Can you hear me?
Sure can. Yeah, go ahead, Commissioner.
Okay. It it was really interesting for me to see this Snow Basin presentation. Because I see an example of a landowner, Snow Basin, hiring talented consultants to help them with planning their private property. And I contrast that with what you're talking about right here. And I think my first impression is the county is trying to jump in the shoes of a landowner to plan property it doesn't own and decide for landowners what they're gonna have on their own private property. I think that's a real problem. I think the uh if I understand the law correctly and the job of the planning commission is to protect individual property rights. That's our job, not tell, not diminish these rights. I see uh we start telling a a private landowner, this is what your buildings have to look like? Why? The county doesn't own the buildings. The guy owns the buildings. The property owner owns the buildings. This is not health, safety and welfare. It gives some jurisdiction to government. This is the uh what we would like. Wouldn't it be nice if we had this? Wouldn't it be nice if it looked like that? Well, maybe the private landowner thinks it would be nice to have his property look like something else. That's his right. I don't think we have any business telling them what his building should look like. I think of this eighteen eighties to nineteen ten mining character, whatever you call this look that that uh Old Town Eden is supposed to have. Uh first of all, it's US. You cannot define exactly what that is supposed to be. And yet you're telling a landowner through an ordinance, his building, his development has to conform to it.
So I have a com- really quick comment on that. I I agree with you that you own land and you should be able to do with it what you would like or make it look like what you would want it to look like. These landowners that would be building these commercial properties, you know, maybe they don't own the land right now, and maybe they're gonna purchase the land. And if you if you go up to Park City and you look around, they've done a really good job with essentially making it look really nice. And they have certain I don't know, ordinances or whatever on how your buildings have to look. And it's not scattered around. Um you know, you don't have a modern, modern farmhouse or a modern building here and then a farmhouse here. And it and they've done a really good job, I think, with essentially the master plan of that whole area. And it looks really nice. And I think it avoids some of the you know, somebody painting their house pink and somebody having a modern house and somebody having a barn all right next to each other in a in a master planned community.
Yeah, thi- thi- thank you for your comments. And I don't know what happened to Commissioner Burton, if he yeah, it looks like he might have had connection issues, maybe you'll wait for him. But yeah, I think that's a good point. We Charlie and I would, as as we did this, we certainly didn't want to take any rights away from anybody either. I don't think anybody in the county does. But what we heard from the community um was, let's let's make um, let's set a higher standard for these specific areas. Um and so what we've heard is they want to do that. They want to use uh the 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 tool of a form-based code in the county planning department to set that higher standard for this area. And so that's, that's how we view it as well. But I I think Commissioner Burton makes some good points.
Yeah, if uh if Commissioner Burton can hear us, Commissioner, it looks like hopefully you don't think we were, anyone was talking over you. It looks like you might have dropped off or uh had some connectivity issues.
Yeah, he's gonna try to get back on.
Okay.
He got, he just called me and he's gonna log back on.
Okay. I really appreciate uh his comments because I think that's a, it's a perspective. It's certainly a policy perspective and and very much a political perspective that um is important, I think, to have because there are, there are those out there who who have to share the same same opinion. I'm a little bit of a a a different opinion and and maybe it's my training, but um I I also uh you know, I think I see stuff like this every once in a while. I I love showing this uh, I showed this during the um uh two thousand sixteen general plan um update process. And I mean, this this really means something. It's very impactful. And our commissioners uh I think are are on board with with uh this kind of a sentiment as well, very much. Let's protect each other's property rights as best we can. At some point, when you, when your neighbor paints his house bright pink, it it does affect your quiet and peaceful enjoyment of your property. And so there's, there's that very delicate balance. And I think Commissioner Burton is is spot on with with talking about the balance because there is a balance that that we need to make sure we don't go beyond. Um I'm not sure that we're doing that, but uh I I appreciate and respect any opinion that would suggest that we're close to a line if we are.
Another thing I would add to that, Charlie, is um this isn't something that that uh we we've been trying to to push through and get adopted really fast because I think we want people to understand that that this is a delicate thing. So we're coming up on what, four years now? I mean, you could argue longer than that if we're talking about the Ogden Valley General Plan. So I think it's something that we've uh tried to take our time on for that, for that reason.
Okay, I'm back on. Hello?
Yeah.
Yeah, I I thought you kicked me off.
Well, I I think we were just, the things I said right, right after, I don't know if you maybe had some connection issues. I I did not, I did not boot you out of the meeting, I promise. Um one of the things that I mentioned um just a minute ago was um we we've taken this very, I think we've taken it very seriously. We we try not to um we tried not to make this something that we just push through and get adopted, but we did want to hear what the landowners in this area wanted. Um Commissioner Burton, and what they told us was they want to set a higher standard in this area of development. Um and that that's what we've heard. We I I don't know that we've heard from anybody uh in our steering committee meetings or in the public meetings that we've had that this is government overreach. We've heard the opposite, that this is a a tool that they would like us to implement. Um but I think Charlie was just bringing up a good point that you made is, is we we definitely do need to be careful of of not overstepping that that line. Um so we we appreciate your comments.
Okay, and when I got back on, Charlie was talking about balance. I don't think when it comes to government protecting individual private property rights, there is any balance. You just protect them. You you just flat out protect them. You can't go there. Now, I I don't know who's on the steering committee. I don't know who, what landowners you've been talking to. But I would say if landowners want to do something like this with their land, they can do it with covenants. But for the county to step in and say, I've talked, we've talked to some landowners, but not all. So we're gonna make, we're gonna honor the desires of those we talk to and impose the standards or whatever on people that we haven't talked to, then that's wrong. I I just, with all respect, thank you. It's overstepping and it's not wrong. I don't understand how we can preserve existing character while integrating newer users into that character. Uh you're either preserving it the way it is and not allowing changes, or you're allowing changes. And then you're not preserving the exact character. I don't understand some of these finer nuances, but I wanted to just say, I think planning, I mean, if if you're Mr. Disney, you can plan Disneyland. If you're Mr. Holding, you can plan Snow Basin. You own it. But the county doesn't own this. The landowners own it. Now, we can do things for health, safety and welfare. But deciding it's gonna be eighteen eighties to nineteen ten mining town look, uh that's not health, safety and welfare. That's that's planning preference. And I understand planners like to plan, of course, but this is going well beyond, I think, what is appropriate. I think if this ordinance had existed in eighteen eighty and been valid and enforceable between eighteen eighty and nineteen ten, we wouldn't have that period old mining town look. Everything would have to look like castles or whatever they wanted to say it looked like. This gives no room for creativity, innovation, for individual landowners to create and use their property in accordance with health, safety and welfare. But it's inappropriate for us to say, I only want, I want my neighbor to do on his property something that appears nice to me. I wanna control what his property looks like. But of course, I don't want him to control what mine looks like. So just a few thoughts. I think they're important. I I just hate to see us go beyond where we should go beyond. I still Charlie have a problem with your road. We we wanna preserve the rural atmosphere, but we're making that road so congested, we can't get farm machinery down it. I ha- have a concern with the idea that drivers are gonna go down there and support by commercial by looking in their windows as they're driving along through that congested area. I think they'll be looking for pedestrians, little kids running up. They're not looking in commercial windows. So I suggest we maintain uh the the things we look at are health, safety and welfare. And we may have individual likes and dislikes for architecture and other things, but uh I don't think we should go there. That's my personal opinion. Thank you.
Thank you.
You, Commissioner Burton. Um any other comments from commissioners tonight? Okay, very much appreciated. Uh everybody's comments are important. So thank you for all you've done. Um staff, thank you for your presentations tonight. And with that, I would adjourn the meeting.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Chair, do you mind if I make one quick comment?
Sure, go ahead.
This is Rick Grover. Um I just wanted to get your take on a possible field dr- field trip up to Snow Basin and what your thoughts were um for that.
Okay, um while we just kind of take a roll call, uh I wouldn't mind going on a field trip. Uh how does everybody else feel about it?
I like the idea, Shannon.
I do too, John L.
Uh I'm in, Justin Torman.
Jeff Burton's in.
Okay.
Twentieth looks good for me. Noon would work for me on the twentieth. Uh well, maybe you guys could circulate some some options. Uh maybe it's a meeting we have up there, uh however you'd like to approach it. But it sounds like we'd all like to consider it.
Okay, I'll get with uh the developer and throw out some options and get back with you.
Awesome.
Okay, thanks.
All right, thanks, everybody.
Really quick, um you can probably adjourn. I just wanted to ask uh staff, first of all, thank you again for doing all that work on the master plan. But um we're getting ready to go to print for our October fifteenth issue, go to print Friday. I don't know if you wanted a formal announcement in the paper for the public hearing on that master plan, or if you want me to try to throw something together, what would you prefer?
Um, great question. So uh our ord- I think under our state codes, we send a notice um to the to the standard. And we also posted on the our website and the state notice website. But I think that'd be great if you wanted to just make a, an I guess, an informal announcement in the in the Ogden Valley News so that we can get
I'm wondering, your notice probably wouldn't be ready though by Friday. I don't know.
We can, we can make it ready. And we know we wanna have it on for public hearing um on that date right now. And so uh we could, we can get I mean, there'll be, it'll look like legalese. Um so it's probably not gonna be a super sexy posting or anything like that.
I I think it should be, Charlie. I think it should be exactly what you're posting in the standard and just post, and then we can put it up here. I it's, I think that's important for the residents up here to to be able to see that and because not everybody gets the standard examiner.
Perfect. Yeah, we can make that happen.
Okay, will you just email that to me?
Be happy to.
Okay, thank you.
Well, thanks, guys.
Thank you all.
Yeah, have a good night.
Have a good night.